LPA. Yep. Okay, good evening.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Stole my thunder. Okay, cool. No worries. Uh, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the, um, April 22nd meeting of the local planning agency to order at 7:00 PM. Um, before I begin, I have a few introductory remarks. Um, my name is Adam Miller and I'll be chairing tonight's meeting. As we begin, I'd like to mention a few housekeeping, housekeeping items for the commission and members of the public present remotely. Public comment will be solicited during each actionable agenda item. Once I ask for public comment on a specific item, please, please click Raise Hand in the Go-To Webinar in order to make public comment. Before being individually identified, all members of the public will be muted. Village staff will announce the speaker by stating their name and unmute their audio to allow to three minutes of public comment. When called, please state your name and address for the record and proceed with your comment, speaking clearly during your allotted time. Also, uh, please limit background noise as much as possible and do not use the chat or question function in the Go-To Webinar as these functions are not, will not be monitored during the meeting. Uh, please join me in standing for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, open, and just.
Thank you. Christina, could you do the roll call, please?
Yes. Chairman Adam Miller.
Present.
Vice Chair Philip Markey.
Present.
Commissioner June Perrin. Commissioner David Leland.
Present.
Commissioner Ray Nazareth. Laura McClellan, alternate one.
Present.
Gerald Brown, alternate two.
Thank you, Christina. Um, I need to have approval on the meeting minutes from the last LPA on February 22nd.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the February 22nd local planning agency meeting.
Motion made by Commissioner Leland. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Markey. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Uh, minutes passed four to zero. Okay, so, um, we have application number 22-4 ZTA. Uh, Royal Palm Beach Health and Rehabilitation Center. The applicant, Red and Associates, is requesting a zoning text amendment to add senior housing facility as a special exemption use in the industrial general IG zoning district specifically requested for a property located at 600 Business Parkway. Midi, I think I've got it. Sir, do you?
Thank you, sir. Is the applicant present? Sir, can you approach the podium over there? Thank you. This is a quasi-digital hearing. I need to swear you and Bradford in. Can you both raise your right hands for me? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'll turn back to the local planning agency and ask if there are any ex parte disclosures on this item?
No.
Okay, thank you. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Midi. Uh, Bradford, over to you, sir.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. If I can share my screen. The applicant is proposing an amendment to the village's Code of Ordinances, Section 2693 Prince III, to allow a senior housing facility, um, as a special exception use in the industrial general zoning district within the village. The subject use is proposed to be added to the village's zoning code under Section 2693-3I as shown in ordinance number 1026. Certainly, a senior housing facility is located within the industrial general zoning district and is considered a legal non-conforming use. The applicant would like to expand the existing senior housing facility. However, the legal non-conformity cannot be expanded or enlarged under village code. Therefore, the applicant has applied for a text amendment in order to make the existing senior housing facility, um, a special exception in order to allow the expansion to proceed. Staff requests that recommendation of approval be submitted to village council regarding this application. With that being said, I'll turn the floor back over to you, Chairman. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Bradford. Um, um, sir, do you have a presentation you'd like to make or anything?
I do not.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, uh, commissioners, any questions, comments? Uh, Commissioner McClellan? Sorry. Commissioner Leland? Commissioner Markey? I have no questions either. Um, I'd like to open the floor to public comments. Anyone like to make any public comment on this item? Anyone online?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll close the floor to public comment. And do I have a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion that we accept application number 22-4 ZTA.
Thank you. A motion made by Commissioner Leland. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Markey. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Congratulations, sir. Thank you. Okay, that, and, uh, so the next meeting of the LPA, it will be Tuesday, May 24th. Do I have a motion to adjourn the LPA?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Leland. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Markey. All in favor? Okay, we are, uh, so now we're going to switch over to planning and zoning. I'd like to call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order on April 26th at 7:05 PM. Um, we've already taken care of the role, the pledge of allegiance. Uh, Christina, you want to do the roll call or copy it from last time?
Sorry, the microphone's off. Your alternate up here, so if we could have him take a moment and get seated on the dais.
Do we do roll call again or do we?
Yes, sir. It's for the record since we have a different dais, please.
Chairman Adam Miller.
Present.
Vice Chair Philip Markey.
Present.
Commissioner June Perrin. Commissioner David Leland.
Present.
Commissioner Ray Nazareth. Laura McClellan, alternate one.
Present.
Gerald Brown, alternate two.
Present.
Thank you. Um, okay, I'd like, uh, request a motion be made on the minutes from the March 22nd meeting.
I'll make a motion we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Motion made by Commissioner Markey. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, uh, seconded by Commissioner Leland. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed five to zero. Okay, so, um, next item on the agenda is application number 21-115 PVA, Starbucks at Southern Palm Crossing. The applicant, IVT Southern Royal Palm Beach 1031 LLC, is requesting a parking variance from Section 23-49B18B to eliminate a portion of the bypass lane along the one-way access to the drive-through on the north and west sides where village code requires a continuous 10-foot bypass lane for a property located 11,001 Southern Boulevard and situated within the Southern Palm Cross, Crossing Shopping Center. Midi, I'll pass it over to you.
Thank you. Your name for the record, sir?
Brian Seymour Gunster on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. Is anyone else from your team going to be speaking?
Uh, hopefully not.
Okay. I'll go ahead and swear everyone in who might be speaking on this. Just swear yourselves in just in case. Do you all swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And I'll turn back to the board and ask if there are any ex parte disclosures on 21-115.
No.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you, Midi. Bradford, over to you, sir.
Great, thank you. Uh, the applicant is requesting a parking variance from village's Code of Ordinances, Section 2349B18B, that requires a bypass lane measuring a minimum of 10 feet wide to be provided for a property located 11001 Southern Boulevard and situated within Southern Palm's Crossing Shopping Center. This particular site is highlighted here in green just west of the current Starbucks location. The required bypass lane shall be clearly designated and distinct from the queuing area and shall run the length of the queuing area. Um, in lieu of the required bypass lane, the applicant is proposing two points of ingress, well, I'm sorry, two points of egress for the queuing lane to exit the drive-through lane, the first adjacent to the menu board and the second along the west side of the building where the pickup window is located. You can see on this slide here, the areas that do not include the bypass lane, the north of the building which shows the drive-through lane exit points and on the west side of the building. Variance request is being made in conjunction with a site plan modification, special exception, architectural approval request in order to allow redevelopment of an existing 4,000-square-foot financial institution with drive-through with a drive-through restaurant. The applicant contends that, quote, "A full bypass lane is, is provided for the eastern side of the building entry to the queue with a break in the curb to allow for customer to exit at the northern apex of the queue. There is a break until the reemergence of the escape lane at the earliest physical possible point on the western side of the building." It also stated in the justification statement that the general intent of the requirement for a bypass lane is to provide an option for vehicle customers to change their mind, which allows for fewer cars in the queue in those circumstances. And we, and they feel that they have accomplished this. Village code, Section 2353A1, allows the village council to grant variances to the parking code when special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land, structure or building involved. It does not result from the actions of the applicant. Will not confer on the applicant any special privilege. Literal interpretation of the provisions of the division would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. The variance granted is a minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the property and will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of this division. Village staff generally agrees with the applicant that the proposed design meets the intent of the requirements to its furthest extent possible, not negatively impacting the existing development, and that the granting of the variance will not confer on the applicant any special privileges. Um, and the variance request is a minimum variance that makes the, um, possible, makes possible the reasonable use of the land. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this application. And staff requests a recommendation of approval be submitted to village council regarding application 21115. With that being said, I'll turn the floor back over to you.
Uh, thank you, Bradford. Uh, Mr. Seymour, do you have an application, uh, presentation or anything?
I have one, but it's basically what you just heard, so I'm happy to forego that. And if there's any questions, um, you can answer any questions.
We appreciate the efficiency, sir. Okay, um, commissioners, any questions? Commissioner McClellan, Leland?
I have none.
Okay, um, I'll save my questions for the next item. So, um, I'd like to open the floor to public comment. Uh, does anyone online wants to make?
No.
Okay, I'll close the floor to public comment. Um, I'd like, uh, can I have a motion be made on this item?
I'll make a motion we approve application number 21-115.
Uh, motion made by Commissioner Markey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, seconded by Commissioner McClellan. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Uh, motion passes five to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Seymour. Um, we'll move on to the next item. Application number 21-116 SPM, S E A A R, Starbucks at Southern Palm Crossing. The applicant, IVT Southern Royal Palm Beach 1031 LLC, is requesting site plan modification and architectural approval for a 4,000-square-foot coffee shop with associated outdoor seating and special exempt, exception approval to allow for a restaurant with drive-through in the general commercial zoning district for a property located 11,001 Southern Boulevard and situated within the Southern Palm Crossing Shopping Center. Uh, Midi, over to you.
Thank you, sir. The applicant, the applicants have been sworn. I'll just ask the commission if there are any ex parte disclosures on this item?
No.
No.
Hearing none. Back to you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Midi. Uh, Bradford?
Thank you. Again, the applicant is seeking approval for a site plan modification, special exception use and architectural approval in order to allow the redevelopment of existing 4,000-square-foot financial institution with drive-through into a restaurant with drive-through. The proposed restaurant with drive-through will have a total of 4,000 square feet, which includes 3,400 square feet of indoor space and 560 square feet of outdoor seating. The property is located 11001 Southern Boulevard within the Southern Palm's Crossing Shopping Center. The particular site is highlighted again here in green just west of the current Starbucks, Starbucks location. Site improvements include conversion of the existing commercial building into a restaurant with drive-through, relocation of parking spaces to accommodate the required queuing area for the restaurant drive-through and associated site and landscape improvements. In reviewing this application, village staff consider conformity with Chapter 26 of the village's Code of Ordinances. Specifically, the proposed project meets the requirements for the general commercial zoning district in Section 2661 Plan Commercial Development as it pertains to parcel size, parcel width, setbacks, pervious area, parking requirements, landscape areas at maximum building height. Overall, the proposed site plan, special exception, architecture, meet all the village's requirements for this type of use in the general commercial zoning district for a restaurant with drive-through with the exception of the parking variance request from Section 2349B18B to provide a continuous bypass lane. Therefore, staff requests a recommendation of approval be submitted to village council regarding this application. Again, I'll turn the floor back over to you.
Uh, thank you, Bradford. Uh, Mr. Seymour?
I'm too excited for your question to give a presentation.
Oh, wow, okay. Um, I'll just ask my question then. Um, so if this is approved tonight, um, when would the new Starbucks be built or finished?
I, I, what's the date of the, the village council if they approve it?
They, uh, what is the date?
May 19th.
May 19th.
So shortly thereafter, the work would, would, would get started. The bikes make it, so we want to get moving as quickly as we can. I don't have a full timeline. If you really want a full timeline, Markey.
No, it's okay. Um, but will the old Starbucks stay open the whole time?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I love Starbucks, so I appreciate that. Yeah, I just drive right by all the time.
My Starbucks bill may pay for, uh, the whole move.
Um, other commissioners, Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Markey?
No question.
Nope, okay, great. Um, uh, like to, uh, thank you, Mr. Seymour. I'd like to open the floor to public comment. Anyone online?
Nobody's online.
I'll close, okay, thank you. Close the floor to public comment. And, uh, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion we approve application 21-116.
Uh, uh, motion made by Commissioner Markey. Seconded by Commissioner Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Uh, motion passes five to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Seymour. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thanks. Okay, next item. Application number 21-127 SPM, Storage Rentals of America. The applicant, Stephen E. Myatt, I'm sorry if I pronounced that wrong, Myatt. Um, Architect Incorporated is requesting major site plan modification approval to allow for exterior site improvements and to update landscaping for a property located at 330 Business Parkway. Uh, Midi, pass it over to you.
Thank you, sir. I see you heading to the podium. Can you state your name for the record?
Steve Myatt, Architect, 639 East Ocean Avenue.
Thank you, sir. Can you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir. And I'll turn back to the commission and ask if there's any ex parte disclosures on 21-127. Hearing none. Back to you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Midi. Uh, Bradford, over to you, sir.
Great, thank you. The applicant is seeking approval for a site plan modification in order to convert the use, um, for the front 31,400-square-foot portion of an existing building from a commercial industrial wholesale use to a self-service, uh, self-storage facility use along with various site plan alterations to accommodate the requested conversion. Property is located at 330 Business Parkway and situated within the industrial general zoning district. Village code, Section 2632F5B8. Intended use of all buildings and structures requires that the intended use for each building be labeled on the site plan. In this case, the 31,400-square-foot portion of the existing building's intended use was commercial industrial wholesale and was labeled as such on the approved site plan. Now, the applicant is requesting to change the intended use to a self-storage facility. All very exciting, isn't it? Um, the various site plan alterations to accommodate the requested conversion include the introduction of a security gate, modifications to the internal site circulation, landscape improvements, and other minor, minor improvements associated with the new allowed principal use. Here's an illustration of the landscape plan. The addition to the landscape plane, plan brings the site up to current village code. Reviewing the application, village staff considered, um, the requirements for the industrial general zoning district as it pertains to parcel size, parcel width, setbacks, pervious area, parking area requirements, landscape areas, maximum building height. Overall, the proposed site plan modification meets all the village's requirements for this type of use within the industrial general zoning district. Therefore, staff is recommending or requests a recommendation of approval to be submitted to village council. With that being said, I'll turn the floor back over to you, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Bradford. Um, uh, uh, Mr. Myatt, I'm glad I said your name correctly. Um, do you have a presentation, sir? Do you have anything you'd like to say?
We do not. It's the presentation you, you just saw. It's, uh, mainly, uh, you know, landscape improvements, uh, removing all the old signage from the building, repainting, you know, those sign areas, fencing it, uh, you know, we think the, the landscape and the fence will just make a, a really, uh, great improvement to, to the area. It'll, um, it'll look very nice and the, the volume of traffic will go down and it'll be quieter, uh, operation there.
Thank you, sir. Okay, um, uh, do commissioners, do we have any questions? Commissioner McClellan?
Yeah.
Commissioner Leland?
Just a comment that I know, uh, you've come before us before about the traffic issues over there. This should be a quieting type of thing for that area, which I think that would make everyone that does business over there happier.
Yeah.
I'm all for it.
Yeah, I think the owner, that was the owner's intent was, um, you know, they own a lot of these facilities and are professional managers of them and those, uh, more active businesses just didn't really fit with their, their operations either, so.
I have a question. So for those businesses, are businesses still currently there?
Nope. They've all, all been closed and have vacated.
Okay, I, I hope they went to other places in Royal Palm Beach.
I'm sure.
So we kept them. Okay, um, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Markey?
I was gonna say, I was, you know, by there a few weeks ago and I was, everything was empty, you know? And, uh, so they just answered my question, why, you know, why are they there?
Uh, Commissioner Brown, any questions?
Good afternoon, good evening. I have a question. Seeing that this is a storage facility, um, I note, note that in the presentation that we have here that you have a security gate. Will you be full-time security personnel on the premises also?
No, it's a by-code entry as it, you know, there will be during the day and, uh, to a certain time. I think it's, is it eight, eight to five, Sean? Nine to five, there'll be, you know, uh, an attendant there and then, then it's by, uh, code only. This is, Sean Dewhurst, he is the owner's rep for the, for Storage Rentals of America, so he may be able to address.
And sir, if I could just swear you in before you, um, begin, what's your name?
Sean Dewhurst.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Uh, we have a manager on site, 9:30 AM to 5:30 PM. That's Monday to Saturday. The operation's closed on Sunday and the security access is only for tenants. As I said, I always provide the code. That's an individual code, so we can track and monitor that. And we'll secure the site. Add some cameras to it as well. Very good. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, I'd like to open the floor to public comment. Yes, ma'am? Come on over.
If you gentlemen could, could, the applicant could sit down for one second?
Hi, my name's Michelle. Um, I actually am still a tenant at this facility, so no, it's not empty. I have a question as far as the parking lot. What's their intentions for the parking lot?
So I, I think this is for public comment for you to share with us.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if this is opportunity for you to actually ask questions.
I've been there for 20 years, um, under their management, and I'm concerned with how the place is going to look. Um, their, their numbers have been off their building for at least four years. They haven't replaced them. There's broken things. There's light poles that are on the ground. Painting's been needed for at least eight years. Um, I'm really concerned with what they're going to do with their parking lot. You might want to consider that. What are they going to be storing in that, all of those spaces in their parking lot? Um, and I'd be concerned with their landscaping. They've been in front of, uh, Royal Palm Beach's code enforcement several times because they haven't taken care of their landscaping, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone else who wants to make a public comment? Do we have anyone online?
Nobody's online.
Okay. Any other comments from the commissioners? Nope. Okay, um, do I, I'd like to request a motion made on application number 21-127.
And, and while we're waiting for motion, does the applicant have any response to the public comment or would you like to make any more comments after the public comment?
Well, the, um, the landscaping is going to be completely redone and, uh, then a fence will be placed around, a black vinyl-coated chain-link fence. Uh, the, uh, where there's signage now, those, those signs will be removed and the building, the facade will be painted at those areas to, to make it look better. And, uh, I mean, the, uh, all the, anything that's broken will be fixed and it will get a complete refresh. And, uh, you know, the biggest, um, improvement, I think, is certainly, you know, the landscaping. It is, it is going to be completely gone over, brought up to code, a lot, a lot of new material and, uh, irrigation repairs, so it should look really good. Uh, that wasn't anything we were aware of in our, in our submission here, so, but I, I can, uh, I've working on several projects, uh, for this company and from what I can tell, it is a first-class operation and if there's something that needs repaired, it'll, it'll be repaired.
Okay, um, and I, I guess I have a follow-up question for Bradford. So if there's, um, violations, how is that handled if they're, they're ongoing for that long?
Right. The, well, code enforcement, um, tries to handle the, these types of issues the best that they can. So if it does, if there is a problem out there, then code enforcement would either identify it themselves or respond to a, um, code enforcement complaint from some, some other, either a tenant or someone in the area.
Okay, thank you. And, um, uh, one other question for Mr. Myatt. Um, so was this property owned by Storage Rentals of America this entire time, for the last 20 years? When, when was it switched over?
I believe it was October of 2018 and we actually submitted for a permit to do the interior work and, uh, that was approved and we were told we need to apply for the site plan approval, so we resubmitted. So we've been going through this process for over a year and a half now.
Okay, so, um, yeah, my comment would be just make sure we, we step, stay up with everything and see if everything was great.
Yeah, we were cited. There was a comment that was brought up previously in this review about maintaining an area of, of landscape we weren't aware that was ours. That was actually addressed pre, uh, prior to us even submitting for this.
And all the new landscaping will be inspected prior to their, uh, certificate of occupancy. Uh, the other things that we'd be looking for is, of course, you know, dilapidated, you know, fixture, light fixtures and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, commissioners, any other questions? Okay, I am going to need a motion to be made, so, um...
Well, I just have one more comment.
Okay.
That, that building, I agree with you, has been in complete disrepair for some time. And, um, one of the things we've always tried to do here is improve on these pieces of property that have become rundown over the years and improve them. I'm a business owner in this community for almost thirty-five years myself. So I appreciate when I see stuff like this that comes in and freshens things up. So I just want to make that comment. We'd like to see it happen expeditiously.
We're ready when, when you are.
All, all of the materials on site, so as soon as this gets approved, it's just a matter of demolition and installing the material, so.
And I will make a motion that we approve application number twenty-one dash one two seven.
Uh, motion made by Commissioner Leland, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Markey, all in favor? Aye, all opposed. Uh, motion passes five to zero, thank you, Mr. Myatt.
Thank you very much.
I didn't catch your name, but thank you, sir. Okay, um, moving on to application number twenty-two dash two four, A R, Papichulo Taco. The applicant Papichulo Taco Bar Royal Palm Incorporated is requesting architectural approval to install a five hundred sixty square foot canvas canopy over the outdoor seating area on the north, south side of the building for a property located at one thousand five North State Road seven. Midi, over to you.
Thank you, if the applicants could approach the podium and give me their appearances, please. And we'll get you sworn in.
Good evening, for the record, Brian Chekis, I Plan and Design, uh, eight twenty-three North Olive Avenue, West Palm Beach.
Uh, Cleve Mash, um, one of the owners of Papichulos, um.
No, you're okay, sir, that's, that's sufficient, can you both raise your right hands for me? Raise your right hand for me, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, I'll turn back to the commission and ask for ex parte disclosures on twenty-two dash twenty-four. Hearing none, back to you, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Midi, Bradford.
Thank you. Um, the applicant is requesting architectural approval to install a fabric canopy over the existing outdoor seating area associated with the Papichulo Taco Restaurant located at one zero zero five North State Road seven within the Regal Center. The proposed canopy is five hundred and eighty-five square feet and consists of yellow fabric, sunflower, and will occur on the south side of the building over the outdoor seating area. And staff is recommending approval of this application, and I'll turn the floor back over to you, Chairman, thank you.
Uh, thank you Bradford, appreciate it. Um, uh, Mr. Mash or Mr. Chekis, do you guys have a presentation?
No.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, great, uh, commissioners, do you have any questions, discussions? Commissioner McClellan, Commissioner Leland? Commissioner Brown? Okay, sure. Okay, um, uh, great, um, so I'd like to open the floor to public comment. Anyone online?
Nobody's online.
Okay, I'll close the floor to public comment, do I have a motion made on application number two-two dash two four?
Move approval, application two-two two four.
Motion made by Commissioner McClellan, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Markey, I think I heard first, all in favor? Aye, all opposed. Motion passes five zero, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
We enjoy Papichulo's restaurant, so thank you for being right on time.
It was a pleasure bringing it to you.
I bet. Okay. Um, thank you. And, um, I, I know we have, next item on the agenda is elections. So, uh, Midi, I think I'm gonna turn it over to you.
That'd be fine, thank you, sir, just a reminder, this is the time of year where you reorganize, um, by code, you have to appoint a chair and a vice chair. At tonight's meeting, you all were, um, reappointed by the council at the last meeting. Um, the only restriction in the code is that the current chair cannot serve more than one consecutive term, so Mr. Miller is out of the running for this current year. Um, past chairs can serve more than one term, but they just can't be consecutive, so. Um, first, if you will, uh, entertain the chair position, and second, the vice chair position. Typically, you do that through motion, so anybody who you'd like to, um, nominate can be, can be motion seconded and voted upon. Uh, and we'll do that for both the chair and vice chair, and if you have any questions, let me know.
So, uh, can the alternates qualify or no?
No, the alternates are all, just alternates, so this is your regular members, only are to be appointed chair and vice chair.
And we can, uh, make a motion for someone that's not currently at the meeting?
That is correct.
I'm just confirming what happened last year.
Yep, that is. That is correct, sir.
Since I'm here to ask a question.
Has it been a year already?
I guess it has. Um, so are there any motions to be made?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Dave Leland as chairman.
So we have a motion, um, from Commissioner Markey. And a second from Commissioner Brown, that Commissioner Leland be the chair, do we have any discussion, I guess, is what we do?
I, I would like to make a motion and then our vice chair become chairman.
Well, we have one motion on the floor, so.
Yep, you need to deal with the motion. Motion first.
So, okay, so, um, all in favor of Commissioner Leland becoming the next chair?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Did you say aye? So, motion passes four to one. So Commissioner Leland, congratulations. You're the new chair. And then for the vice chair, um, need a motion? So Commissioner Markey, um, and do I have a second, that, uh, Commissioner Perrin become the vice chair?
Oh, Phillip, you really dodged that one, didn't you?
Well, he's the fastest, you guys. Second by Commissioner Brown, all in favor, Commissioner Perrin? Aye, uh, all opposed? Okay, uh, commi-, uh, pa-, motion passes five zero, Commissioner Perrin is now our vice chair, congratulations, June, even though you're not here. Um, okay, our next meeting is Tuesday, May twenty-fourth. Um, will that be chaired by Commissioner Leland, Matt?
Yes, sir.
Get ready, sir, okay.
Ready.
Um, do I have a motion to adjourn my last meeting as chair?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say you did a fine job. And it seemed like you was awful quick here.
Well, I made the motion, the meeting's quick, what can I say, so. Okay. Thank you, sir, so. I'm trying, I'm trying to end the meeting fast, so. Anyone a motion?
I'll make a motion we adjourn the meeting.
Okay, second? Second and all in favor? Aye, okay. Have a great evening, everyone, and see you next month, thank you. You guys are funny. Thank you, Midi.
Thank you, sir, great job.
Thank you.